If you will, please, Mr. Woodman, please, in our indication, and make the call in our place. Mr. Wood.
Let me pray. I greet the family, Father, this morning. We come to you in painful hearts. Dear Lord, we thank you for all your many blessings. Thank you for this great country that we live in, Lord, and the freedoms that our Irish enjoy. We pray that you would be with us during this meeting. Give us of Thine divine wisdom that we make the decisions that be proper and good for the citizens of our county. In the name of Jesus.
Thank you.
Please, Lord, please, attention, salute, pledge.
A pledge to the life of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, received, please. Again, we appreciate your presence this morning. Thank you for the indication of the pledge. The next item is to approve our minutes. I believe you receive them as any change that you may make, if not, they are approved as approved of the minutes. Your second, closing second in discussion, many favors having on saying aye. Anyone post a objection? Thank you. First item, Road Department, maintenance update, Mr. Paul.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks real quick on a couple of things. Thanks, last week, we talked about starting our replating list. We have completed a portion of that list. It's ran the Hydrate area. We still like one more road out on Lookout Mountain. We'll be trying to get it maybe sometime next week. We've got to char halt on all these roads. We're in the process of doing a little regrading and compacting on it. As soon as we get that done, we'll start hauling some treated base material out onto those. Maybe we'll get all of these finished up in time to start on eight thirty-five before too long. I'm hoping we'll get to go ahead on that pretty soon when we can get started on that. That's about all I have for you. Don't have much new in the way of maintenance update. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Paul. Your question?
I do have one.
Okay.
Our old nemesis has reared his head again. Fed humorous contacts concerning the ditching situation. We all know you can't do a great deal until all the moments come. Can you give us some kind of potential timeframe where we might be able to start doing some of that particular kind of work?
Probably mid, late October, November. Hopefully, it'll be a timeframe on that. And it'll be dependent on how well the projects go.
Thank you. You have a question? First, Matt.
I have two guys that are going to be retiring this year. Mr. Ronnie Gray from District Three Crew and Mr. Philip Oldell from District Two. I'd like to go ahead and post those positions if we could and fill those at the next meeting.
We will just incorporate all of that into one motion. Any questions about Mr. Paul? If not, then I hear a motion that we accept his resignation and at the same time post his job.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Post a second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Now surplus, be here.
I had given a map list of vehicles. I think there were six vehicles out of the road department. This is pretty much just junk. It's just sitting around. If we're not using anymore, trucks are not really working anymore. I got Russ Wood to look at those items a few weeks ago and he gave us a guarantee on them. I'd like to go ahead and clear those surplus and let them sell them in their September auction. They won't be transported to the auction. They'll be sold before they're at.
All right, to your Mr. Paul, recommendation, a question?
No, we approve.
Your second? Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Close and care.
I'll bet you on one more thing. I told you at the last meeting, I had not ordered trucks yet. Finally, last week, I had those trucks ordered. As I told you, I had been checking into the possibility of switching from the trucks we have on the road right now to a new style cab. When we got the prices for them, the oil company felt it was a little more than what we could overcome when we sold them. But then I found out that it had taken the salesman's loan, give me the quote on them, that the trucks like we're running now, build rates were already toward the end of December on dump trucks and into toward the end of January on road tractors. So we were forced to order these trucks. But they did because the way everything worked out, they've cut twenty-eight hundred and fifty dollars per truck off of the purchase price of these trucks. So I feel like with that that we'll probably do pretty good on them. But we could make a good bit of money on them. But that will certainly have quite a bit of a note. So I have got all of them ordered. Ordered two Mack trucks this year in order to get us. Just mentioned that we need on a couple applications. Kenworth had nothing ready to offer for that. So we'll be getting sixteen Kenworths and two, or seventeen Kenworths and two Max this year. They are ordered and should be delivered in late December, early to the middle of January.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. That's always been good progress for us. We appreciate it.
So I have four.
Thank you. In the news, Mr. Wood.
Good morning.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Cockdall had made me aware of a family's concern on County Road 101, mainly about a school bus stop. I believe we've taken care of it with a particular sign. But also, we've looked at the road as far as the speed limit. It was not currently posted. And so after looking at the road, I would like to recommend that we post the speed limit at thirty-five miles an hour for that entire road, County Road 101. And would request that the commission pass that resolution to that F.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Cockdall, would you put your ear?
It will be in the best interest of everyone who travels that route, the traffic, the lower rate of speed, snare, hill, and curbing. And it's not a super highway. Sometimes it's used that way. It's just remind him to drive a little slower. So I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Cockdall. On your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Next item, damage claim.
We received a damage claim from Ethan Castleberry on County Road 120. One of our bush hogs were mowing the road and slung a rock into the back windshield of his car sitting at his residence. And I have verified that through the road department. So I would request that we send this on to the insurance company.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, if you're most of the fault, Mr. Paul, would you care? Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Transportation plan, Mr. Wood.
Last thing, you have there in front of you the fiscal year 2020 County Transportation Plan, which we are required to adopt the fourteenth of August to comply with the new gasoline tax law. And so we have that here for you. And would ask the commission to adopt this plan for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. We have to do this for our purposes, that's for us.
Yes, sir.
We have this so long with the law versus tax. Any questions concerning that?
Just a statement. I'd like to thank Mr. Wood for all his work on this. We've put a lot on him the last little bit, and I appreciate how hard he's worked with this and the information he's gathered. Time would matter, and I would like to make a motion that we adopt the 2020 Transportation Plan.
Thank you. Wood, your statement. Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Appreciate all of you. Raven, you can be the person next with us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The only thing I have, Tiffany Graven, who's been with us for about four, going on five years now, currently works as a real property appraiser. She's going to be resigned. And would like to be posted her position to be open to hire that next meeting.
That's all we have.
Is that one?
Uh, it's right. This is all we have. We need to see the government, but we honor her to weigh in questions concerning Mr. Wood's recommendation. If not, let's incorporate both of them into one motion, that is to accept her resignation and post her position. Your motion, that F.
Something.
Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wood. EMA, Mr. Clifton, I EMA Con.
Good morning, Mr. Gray. I would like permission to attend the International Association of Mercy Managers Conference in Savannah, Georgia, on November fifteenth through the twentieth of this year. That was not included in my annual training calendar submitted first year. I felt like it would be prudent to get permission to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. Did you hear, Mr. Clifton, please? Let me just say this in the beginning, South Alabama, and our EMA is very high of expectation down there. And we appreciate all the work and all the good reports that we receive from not only your agency, but people like the ATS, the Sheriff's Department. And it's very important that you attend this and to make you aware and public aware that our first option, our first priority is not an option, but a priority that is, so you thank for that. Tell me any questions concerning that. If not, then your motion, your question?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you.
On the tower committee appropriation, as you're aware, 2007, we began a project of replacing radial towers on Lookout Mountain, the Tower Hill. We constructed a new, what we call the Supertower project. It's the tower that you see on Lookout Mountain. That project involved ten shareholders. Each of the ten shareholders put in twenty thousand dollars each. That project has been there now for twelve years. If we divide that up, that's roughly sixteen hundred and sixty-six dollars a year, which divides up to about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month. And you compare that to tower rent, rental, average tower rental is about two thousand dollars a month. So if we had to rent the same space that we have now, just for a single antenna, would cost us about twenty-four thousand dollars a year. So that was a good investment. However, that does require maintenance. As part of the agreement, the original agreement we signed, that the ten stakeholders signed, each of them agreed that at some point in time, we would have to add additional funds to keep the maintenance up on the tower and to expand it as it goes. The tower committee met and has requested that each of the stakeholders contribute an additional fifteen thousand dollars. Now, we have three shares, one with the EMA, one with the commission, and one with the sheriff's office. So we hold three shares. And so that would be a total of forty-five thousand dollars in additional funding we need you to appropriate. Now, with that said, again, if you look at that and break it down by the numbers, had we put in thirty-five thousand instead of twenty, so that's what we're looking at, is a total of thirty-five thousand dollars per stakeholder, that would figure out to about two hundred and forty-three dollars a month. Again, you compare that, and even if you multiply it by three, the three stakeholders, you're looking at, you know, roughly seven hundred and fifty dollars a month compared to two thousand dollars each per month and having to rent somebody else's tower. So this is money well spent. Being a good steward of the taxpayer dollar is my belief. And we believe that with this final phase of construction, we will be to a place where we can actually rent space on our tower. Once we do, and it's our belief that we have enough interest right now, I've got at least two companies interested in becoming renters on our tower, that it will become a perpetual project. In other words, those renters will actually pay for the future maintenance on the tower itself. This should be the last money we ever have to put in. So that's, you know, my request is, is that if we go ahead with that appropriation for the three agencies that are involved, a fifteen thousand dollar bid.
Thank you, Cliff.
Question, what's the total amount of funds that will be contributed by all parties at this time?
Thus far, originally, it was two hundred thousand dollars, and then this will be another hundred and fifty, or ten.
Will that provide enough resources to finish the final phase of this tower?
Yes, sir.
And leave enough for maintenance, enough to keep as well?
Yes, sir.
What's the projected date of the final phase start?
Well, right now, we've actually already started into the final phase. If you notice, we, again, part of this is maintenance upkeep. If you've looked at the tower, you know, our lights are out. We've got Mr. Kiggins, who's actually already started the project last week before the weather changed. We're putting new lighting in now, and we're getting to move the cabling from the old buildings into the new building. Depending on weather, we expect, my ambition is to have it done before ice time gets here, before January, February. It's radio, it's tower climbing, and there's no guarantee of that. Our expectation, I mean, we have the expectation of having it done before the first year. That is our plan. Now, I can't guarantee that, but that is our, that is our expectation. And we believe we can do it.
Thank you, Kirk. Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Any other questions? Your motion, your motion, your question?
My question.
Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you.
Sir, one thing that's off the agenda, and I meant to make this just an announcement, Tuesday, September third, here in the commission office, two P M, we're going to have a special call meeting of the DeKalb County All Hazards Planning Work Group, the Hazard Mitigation Subcommittee. And that is to discuss possible uses for some grant money that has come available after disaster forty-four twenty-six. And so please make plans on coming to that. And basically, what we'll do is we're going to discuss how much grant money is available, and then what we want to do with that grant money within five. Thank you so much. That's it. Two on the third.
Thank you so much, sir. We appreciate it. Sheriff's Office, personal next, Mr. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have several things. First, I'll be personal. I have one resignation, and that's Trey McMeekin.
You hear the resignation announcement? Any questions concerning that? Your motion on to that question?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Go ahead.
I have some new hires also. I would like to hire Christina Crummon to replace Tabitha Franklin, and hire Caitlin Waldrop to replace Sebastian Gomez.
Is that the only two you have?
Yes, sir. That's the only two you hired.
Okay. Any questions concerning that? I'm assuming that's ready to do.
Yes, sir.
Any questions concerning that? If not, then your motion on to that question?
Something.
Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Now, Trey.
I have two requests for training. The first would be for our ACCA training that is held quarterly. It'd be for David Bell, Jordan McGuinness, and myself on September eleventh and the twelfth.
Is that all the training you have, Mr. Smith?
No, sir. That's just for this one. I have a separate set also.
Okay. All right. You hear, any questions concerning this question? If not, this is ACCA, and the required course comes under C R A, our insurance program also, so keep that in mind. But your motion on to that question?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Continue.
The last I have is some training that the sheriff's office has done in the past for jail staff, and I would like to get back into it. It's jail management school. It's a very extensive school that keeps our corrections officers up to date on changing laws, changing strategies, different things in the jail. There's some medical training involved there also. It's a two-week course, and I'd like to send four of my corrections officers to it. It'll be in Coleman, and September the sixteenth through the twenty-sixth. And I'd like to send Jennifer Whaley, Charles Young, Lee Meadows, and Adam Jackson.
Now, is this jail training? This is not ACCA, is it?
No, sir. It's not ACCA.
This will be very important for the general going on this time of, very short, and there's changes going to be made, and it's going to be necessary for you to be on top of this situation. I know we are as much as you can be, but if there's changes, there may be other questions that you gentlemen may want to ask.
Yeah, one quick question. I'm all for training. You have to have it. But I also know it's not free.
Yes.
What's the, is there a good long-term potential that these particular people will be employees for significantly time?
They are, yes, sir. These four individuals, three of which are supervisors in the corrections, in the corrections department, and one of which has been with us for several years. And I feel like these will be here. So it'll be money well spent on their education.
In that, I'll move that we authorize training for these four people.
Thank you, Mr. Cockdall. And your second?
Second.
Close and second in question, in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Other than those that would oppose, if not, then I'd like to represent, would you manage? We appreciate it so very much.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it. Counsel on the agent, first.
Right hand, John.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm not on there. Just a couple trainings.
Oh, okay.
All I have. I'd like to ask permission to send some of our SROs to the second round of the criminal justice continuing education training. They'll be teaching in the high schools. They've already been to the first round. This will be for two nights, September eighth and ninth. The class is free. This will be basically just be the lodging.
And they'll be teaching in the high schools.
Yes, they already are.
Yeah.
But this, there's like, I think, six steps of the training to have their certification. I think two of which are done online before they actually have to go to class. This will be the second round.
Any questions, Mr. Gray, concerning that? If not, then your motion on to that question? Your second? Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you.
One other, I'd like to ask permission to send Sergeant Jeff Thane to Southeastern Leadership Executive Development Seminar in Opelika. It's a week long in October.
Do you have any questions concerning that? If not, then your motion on to that question?
Something.
Your second?
Second.
In discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you. Close and care.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
One comment.
Yes, sir.
Everybody knows, not, everybody knows I'm a penny pincher, but training is absolutely essential for our employees to do their job, take care of people, and even if they feel pressured, I'm okay with it. So maybe the only time you ever hear me say that.
You're coming forward, man.
We appreciate the fact, great help to us. We thank him and all these other meetings, all they do, conscientious effort they set forth to help along with our safety organization, for every other organization to do a great job. They certainly have great help to me and are every day. And I doubt we find a group that would work better together. If we're in state, we have that reputation. And when I leave here, we still will have it all, Mr. Cockdall. We thank you. Next item, counsel on the agent, first.
I have one personnel.
All right.
We want to hire Calvin Damer as a substitute driver, replacing Bobby Lingerfield.
Any questions concerning the recommendation? If not, then your motion on to that question?
Something.
Your second?
Second.
Close and second in discussion. Many favors having on saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone post a objection? Thank you.
Y'all got a flyer in front of you. Can I jump in and talk about the health fair?
Yeah, come in.
Okay. Health fair. It's going to be October second, and we've got the normal people we have there. We have the Cab Ambulance Service, home health agencies, hospices, different healthcare groups. We're also going to have EMA there, and we're hoping, we're hopefully going to have the sheriff's department. They're going to talk about three of their programs. They're called Are You Okay, Project Life Saber, and Yellow Dot Program. All right, I got those. But if any other county agencies want to be there, we'll be happy to try to get you in. I've got flyers, and it's got the contact information on it. And it's going to be bigger than usual. I think I, did I mention it last month? It's bigger than usual. It's not in our building because we're not big enough at Council on Angi. We're going to hold it at Menville Life Center, and we're going to combine it with our Fall Festival. And that's where all, some of our senior centers come. We have a band playing for free, which is wonderful. We'll have lunch, and then we'll have some games and a lot of door prizes. The vendors are going to bring most of the door prizes this year. That's another bonus. We're not having to pay for door prizes. But we'll be having that coming up. We've also got on Thursday of this week, if any county employees want to come to the training that we're doing, it's called the Real World Dementia Experience. And yes, we tend to need to know about this in our job when we're working.
The real world, what?
Real World Dementia Experience.
Thank you.
And yes, we need to know on a personal note how to, what people with dementia are experiencing so that you can communicate with them. But you also need it, you know, in your work world. But it is, it is a real world experience, and they're trying to explain to you the visual and the hearing problems that people with dementia sometimes suffer. So some of the things they'll have, you know, they'll, she'll have things that you can try out, like certain goggles that show you the different vision problems somebody with the visual problem has. They also have noise cancellation headphones, and gloves to wear, and tasks to do, just to let you understand, okay, buttons might not be a good person if you're a caregiver for someone that can't feel their fingers anymore. That's why the gloves are there. You can't do little tasks like that. But I'm, I'm not an expert on this, and I did not explain it as well as she will. So feel free to come join us. It's going to be at ten o'clock on Thursday morning at the Council on Angi. And if there is anybody from the public that wants to get, that are nurses or social workers that wants free CEUs, she's going to start that at twelve forty-five. And Francie, I forgot her last name, but I got her first name. She's going to be doing it for free for us. And she's doing the morning session for free, and doing it for the public for free. And then she also came to our caregiver support group several months ago and did it for free for them. So it's a passion of hers. She wants people to understand what's happening so that it'll better prepare you for the people you deal with or the one that you're helping with. That's it. That's all I have today. Any questions?
Thank you for the job, people. And we appreciate it. This will not be held over at the center this year, be held at Menville.
Health Fair will be at Menville. And then the training is at Council on Angi.
You mentioned games. Now, Mr. Sharp, this one, just mentioning that, you know, he, since he's a senior citizen, people love to get involved in the pickleball. Are you going to have the pickleball?
Definitely not.
No, no, no.
There's no space for pickleball in this area.
When you get ready for the pickleball.
And there may be some of you I will call for tables because I've already borrowed from four agencies for this. But yeah, and Tarco's going to probably be providing.
If you haven't seen it, you can move in, see it, and we'll just start it off.
Hey, when you get involved in masters games, there are a lot of seated events. And I'll be back in November to talk about how many medals they've won, because we go in October. And actually, we're taking, see, my parents volunteer. They've been volunteering for about eight years. They'll be going, and I'll be going. And then we have seventeen other people from DeKalb County that are going to be competing. And at least five of them are doing the five game, run, walk. You can run or walk it. But we're excited about that. And we've got a swimmer this year, I think, that's going to do four swimming events. So we're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When they get a hundred yard k, I'll go.
One more thing before we put out a business statement. We did it out today, part of last week. If my privilege to take that Mr. Sharp, his president of State Administration, Friday Association, this is his second term. I don't know whether that's ever happened in the state before, but anyway, that he did his good job the first time that he rested his retirement and elected him again. And so, Mr. Sharp, we congratulate you, and we appreciate all that you do at that regard.
I appreciate that. You know, serving on the service administrator, I feel very fortunate to be county administrator of DeKalb County, for sure, it's my home county. And I feel very fortunate to work with you guys and your privileges to be in that position. And you know, to be elected by your peers the second time wasn't anything that I asked for, for sure. I did serve on the side of LA and this time. But serving as county administrator and president, you also served on the ACCA board here, of course. Mr. Harrow was, of course, he was, he's past president of the association, and has been a past president. He serves on that, of course. We did a lot of different things while he was, while he was president of the association. So I just wanted to mention that to you and all the other boards that you serve. What boards he served on besides the Board of Rec?
Those only serve.
Yeah. I want to push you back. I wanna push it back to him.
Uh, well, I was, of course, loved, uh, the board, which is the national board, this, uh, the national board of directors, the two, I'll mount, Mr. Ray Long and myself, uh, were part of that board, not the state association, the privilege to have that particular, uh, particular privilege. And I, I, I appreciate that, uh, nicely said, or, or, on, on that. One other thing, uh, I will be here next time, uh, the fact I'll be presiding, and, cause the plan, uh, P L A N, now that's a leadership plan. I, I got that started when I was president over the years ago and, uh, it, it turned into a, a bigger, a bigger problem than you ever thought. And so, I, I wanna be there with them on the tenth to have two, three-day session and I wanna be, um, explaining how all of that evolved. So, I'll be back, but, uh, it's been a privilege for me to serve all these years on that, these young, uh, do so much and couldn't do it without me. And so, meanwhile, I do want to congratulate Mr. Sharp and, uh, know that he and Rick Black, and Clifton, and Sheriff, and Engineer, and Mr. uh, Mr. Luther, and all these others, uh, have such contributions to the way we have to operate. So, great thinking to have this privilege to work with. Gentlemen, that concludes our agenda for the day. Uh, your motion, we adjourn.
We adjourn.
Without catching soul, thank you.